Okay, are we ready? We're pretty much on time.
We didn't come back early, but we're back.
Yeah, but we're back. We're fine. And we're doing well. So...
All right, let's call the meeting to order.
Okay, the meeting has been called back to order. All righty. Okay, good. So as this slide says, now we're going to talk about how are we going to govern, anyway? And the picture up there, I've actually used in a lot of these, which is the art of the possible. It's not the art of the perfect, but it's the art of the possible when you're governing. So, oops, let me see here. Here we go. Oh, wouldn't you know it, I hit the wrong, Kendra, I hit the wrong button. Oh, there it is. Okay. That's a nice thing to have Kendra over there that I can call on if need be. So, we're going to jump right into what guidelines are going to help our governance. And the first question is, what overall principles should we follow? Now, based on the interviews that I had with all of you, and based on some of the comments this morning, and particularly the comments about principles and practices that have helped you already be successful as a city of Santa Clara, I have written out three possible principles just to test with you, to see if these make sense. Principles are high-level, you know, guidance for yourselves. And then, we're going to talk about specifics. I mean, after we, after you decide either these or some others as principles, then we're going to get into sort of the nitty-gritty. And it might even get down to the stationary, you know, some of the nitty-gritty. But it's always good to start with, kind of, what are we about from a principled point of view? So the ones that I want to test with you are, we all care about and will govern for the entire Santa Clara community as a principle. Another one, we will follow our Santa Clara ethical values. I'm not sure that's what you call them, but I know you have a set of ethics. And three, we will follow our council manager form of government, which was actually embedded in a lot of your comments over there. Now, I attempted to write a principle and then discarded the idea about districts, you know, what might be a principle about districts. But like I said, I discarded that idea, wanting to put that to you. But let me first ask, if these principles reflect where the Santa Clara City Council is coming from? So now, I'm just opening it up to comments, changes, throw them out. Kathy, what about you?
Okay, Jan. Jan, say the question again.
Well, my question is, thinking first at a high level, are these principles ones that you feel like you could sign up to and say, you know, we're really going to follow these as a city council and as a management team? I mean, these are principles for the city of Santa Clara, overall. And then, we'll get into the specifics about procedures and protocols.
I don't see any reason why, and reason to change any of those, because, number one, I mean, it's what our constituents are used to, in terms of how the government, you know, just works with the city. But at the same time, because, again, this is something new, that it may change, and it may change again, because we're still, you know, we, you know, we asked the residents, you know, are you, do you want districts? And they've said yes, but now we have to figure out how many districts. So, it may not necessarily always be six districts, but at the same time, I think as a result, I mean, I think it's something that will change over time, and it's something that, because this is new to us, until we get into the meat and gravy, we won't know until time goes on.
Teresa, what are your comments about these as principles?
I agree. I mean, I had an echo of what Kathy was saying, I think that that's pretty much where we've been coming from. And I don't see that anything with the districts has changed.
Changed? Okay. So, okay.
I agree with all of those. I think, as Councilmember O'Neill said, the districts won't change that, the principles, but the districts will change the operations.
Yeah, so when we get into specifics.
Probably, yeah, about that, but I think that's generally...
Okay. Karen?
Well, I got a call from someone, and they made an assumption that we were going out to dinner, and that we had to have dinner in a restaurant in District 3. And I thought, that's a perception of the public. And I thought, oh, okay. Why? And so, I think it's, I agree with Teresa. I don't see our principles changing. But there's maybe some perception.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, these are what you've already had, and so, it's not suggesting that you change them?
I think so long as they know that that's like the 30,000-foot level.
30,000 foot.
And we're going to come down.
Yeah.
In process. So, this is the governance that we have in place. I think when we get down to where the districts are separated, or how it's going to look, it's coming down the pike. But so long as we have guiding principles, and we just continue the process.
Yeah, okay. Raj, what are your thoughts about these as 30,000 foot?
Broadly, yeah, these are the fundamentals, whether we have districts or no districts, or whether we had the previous system, these are the guiding principles we have to follow.
Regardless.
And going down the line, when we define the district, our procedures, our fundamentals can change, but that's going down the line. But these will still stand the same.
Coming right up.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so it sounds like there's a pretty strong consensus that these are, I mean, it's not rocket science. I mean, this is what you've had.
Can I make an observation as a non-council member?
Yes, of course.
And maybe, it's the elephant in the room that nobody's bringing up. But, we all agree that the council, no matter if you're from a district, or you're from the legacy, which is not districts, that you probably, with the red marker, should underline "entire" in that first sentence. Because...
If I spelled it right, it would help, too, wouldn't it?
And I don't think, I mean, everybody's stated that they care about the entire community, and the decisions will be made for the entire community. But, the reality is, if there is a decision that may be unfavorable towards a council, towards the residents of a certain council district, but may be beneficial for the entire community, the council member in that district may feel compelled to not, to vote along with the will of their constituents, rather than the benefit of the entire community, for fear of not being able to be re-elected in the future. And I know, we're already talking about that with the whole concept of the vote trading that happens in other cities, or the mini-mayor syndrome that happens in other cities. But, I'm curious to see how, as we drive down into the next level of details, how we can protect the city against that kind of phenomenon.
Yeah, good.
And I don't know if others agree with that, but I see nodding heads.
Okay. Okay, good. So then, let's just pause on this. We wanted just to put these up. So now, let's begin to drive down to the next level. So, the next question is, what protocols remain the same? And Deanna and staff have put together a couple of slides, which actually list a whole bunch of protocols. And I'm going to go to those. They are, we're going to, we will be coming back to this after we go to this question. City manager council commitments and guidelines. And there are two of those slides. So, they're in front of you, and it's Slides 38 and 39. So, Deanna, who's the best one to go through those? Would that be the city manager, maybe?
Deanna, do you mind if I, I also wanted to add one more comment to my earlier one, if that's okay? It'll just be a really short one. The flip side of the problem that I mentioned, is that because of certain requirements of council members needing to excuse themselves if they reside or have a business within a certain distance to a decision, then it is likely, or it is probably more likely, that council members will end up needing to recuse themselves from decisions within their own district, because they live there, where their voice may be, needed to be heard more, because they understand the intricacies of what's going on in their district. So there's, it cuts both ways, unfortunately.
You may very well have that.
Which is what my name means in Arabic, by the way.
Santa Clara will not be alone in a district city that does that. Yes, that's probably going to happen. Okay, so, Deanna, why don't you share these commitments and guidelines, and really, these are protocols?
So, these are my reflections, based on the work that we've done already at the executive and management level, and anticipating, just over the year, what I've heard from the council. So, allow for me to surface issues about governance, when plans, processes, resources, and other areas impacted not, may not be conducive to a district-focused response, but more city-wide. So just be comfortable with me speaking up, and acknowledge that that's my role in the transition that we're going through. City and council will plan strategically, city-wide. That's how the organization is structured, our systems and our resources. City manager will work with the city council on governance issues that advance the goals and priorities of the city council. We'll talk about that in January. Want to be mindful about how we approach those discussions. City manager will work with the city council on governance issues that may constrain our growth. City manager will provide the same information to all members of the city council. City manager will manage city-wide, and speak up where there is tension, lack of resources, or other issues to be addressed. Staff will work through the city manager, and acknowledging that a broad spectrum of governance implications exist, and that they all matter. So, meeting protocols, budget, and I already heard the stationary come up, and so, we'll get to those details at some point.
So, why don't I go to the next slide, and we do an overview, and then, let's come back to this, and ask for any specific questions about what does it really mean in implementation? Okay?
Sure. So, we'll continue to hold our council member one-on-one meetings, acknowledging that you're individuals of the city council. City council members may communicate either directly with the city manager, or speak to directors on specific issues. When the latter occurs, directors are always advised to let the city manager know as soon as, as soon as practical on communication exchanges. This enables me to track what's important to each of the council members, and for me to be accountable and effective in my duties. The council will consult the city manager often, to ensure that the council's actions align to administrative resources, protocols, and values. And on city-wide versus districts, council meeting protocols, we should talk about those issues. Land use decisions, service requests, district-generated reports, and budget. Those were items that came out of our two sessions already, that we're interested in having some dialogue with the council.
So we'll come back to those specifically. But let me flip back to the first slide, just to see, these are procedures that are in place now, is that correct, Deanna, on this slide? So, is there any reason that any council member has either a thought that they should change, or that there's a question on any of these? On this slide?
Just a comment. I think that, under her direction, as a city manager, she's only bought transparency and better communication in governing. And it has been, for me, a great weight lifted off, because, I mean, like in my sixth year, I guess, I don't, I'm not real sure, but anyway. When you go through different, somebody tells you one thing, someone says another thing, the consistency has to be there, otherwise, we're not going to have the governance structure that we need. So, she has been very, answers questions, but all of that information is disseminated to every council member, so that we kind of all, even though we can't have serial council conversations, Deanna is the conduit to make sure that everybody knows what is going on in the city at all times. So, and one of the things that I really appreciated was the blog, because we had to disconnect with the community. And when she came, and I said, there's people that know things, and misinformation was rampant in this city. And Deanna says, oh, I have a solution. And I said, this is good for me, because it's pushed out into the community, so that all the information is accurate. And that was another problem that we had, which went right back to that trust issue. So, I think that that has helped tremendously in gaining the respect of the staff, and the community, and the council, and I just think that it worked very well for us. You know, I wasn't aware of blogs that, you know, city managers did. I thought it was great, because there was a communication break. But I think that when you, when you put that kind of governance together, it gets everybody in a structure, and people like structure.
Yes.
They don't like the willy-nilly kind of thing, and the answer from one person was different from the next person. And if there isn't consistency, then we have chaos. And I think she's brought that chaos to a halt, well, I would love to say a halt.
Minimal chaos.
Let's say minimal, yeah. I know, she's only been here a year, we're going to give her more stuff. But anyway, just a comment on that one. Thanks.
I will say that it is a best practice to do the blog, but not many city managers do it. So, maybe at the next city managers' department conference, you can give a little presentation on, it really is a wonderful communication tool. So, yeah.
Would there be any value in seeing if there's some priority items here?
Oh, items that are particular priority to council members on this particular...
That Deanna can find out what's important.
Uh-huh, sure. Yeah, if council members do. Uh-huh. Patricia?
I see this more as a matrix. I think they're all pretty equally important, and they overlap, and so forth, and taken as a whole. It really gets to what I would like to emphasize, is that despite district elections, this is a city-wide government. And I would expect the city manager, and thankfully, I'm very glad to see this, that there should be no reason to even worry that a response may be not conducive to district focusing, because it is, everything is city-wide. I mean, we're not a huge city, and our neighborhoods don't differ much one from the other. So, it's not as though we have particular areas that might need specific solutions. I think all of our solutions and so forth need to be looked at city-wide. So as I say, I think this is probably more of a matrix, that you're going to flow everything through, all of equal importance.
I agree with that. I think it is, all of them are equally as important. I think what's going to be a little more challenging is when we talk, when we do a deeper dive into the districts.
District questions.
And then, when you have council members, maybe, that are more outspoken than other council members, and are putting more pressure on the manager's office and the staff to get things done for their district, that's when the issues are going to come forward. Now, if everyone, everyone that's elected, you know, followed all this city-wide in a perfect world, then that's going to be great. But I think we need to talk about, and the reason we're here today, how do we govern with all of these districts, when it really sets in?
Yeah.
Especially the political realities of it, and how maybe the lens changes from a city-wide lens to a district lens. And I think those are the things we need to talk about.
It is the first election with two... Yeah, oh, sorry.
Can I ask a question to Jan and John? Have you guys, I'm sure you've witnessed in other cities, this kind of vote trading and horse trading that's been going on? What have you guys seen in terms of ways to mitigate that? Like what other cities have done to mitigate the vote trading and the horse trading for, from district to district?
Oh, I don't know. I think that has more to do with culture than anything else. You know, I think it has to do with the organizational culture. I think it has to do with the size of the city. It has to do with whether council members are full-time council members or not, you know, and making a living off of this kind of thing. So, it's hard to say one way or the other. I can't say that.
Yeah, I guess my observation is, having worked as a consultant with cities that have been districted for, you know, eons, that have not worked as well, I actually have not necessarily placed the, you know, fault at the fact that they're district. As, and I think I would agree with John, it's more the culture, how they interpret that. Where there is a perspective of the, somebody said mini-mayor, you know, where there is a perspective of, this is my district, I'm in charge, I get to decide, and where the other council members agree with that, then that's where you really have the bifurcation. And then, that's also where you can end up with some serious problems in various districts, too. I can imagine that happening here, because you've already said you value working for the entire community. So you're starting from a very, very different base. But I certainly have seen that, and it's hard for those cities to come out of that, because it's so embedded. There are cities that have tried to come out of it, and it takes leadership, a new mayor, a new council, takes leadership to do that, but it's difficult. You're not there. That's not you. You're starting at a very, very different plane, and you're being very, very conscious about it, so, yeah.
I love the fact that we're talking about it. I'm a little concerned, I think rightly so, that when the political reality set in, as to how we're elected, and who elects us, you know, if there's ways we can help mitigate that issue.
Exactly, yes.
Is, you know, it's going to be important for us, and that's why I like the fact that we're going to be checking in, you know, constantly.
Yeah.
So that we don't fall into that, that I've seen other communities that have districts fall into.
Absolutely.
You know, as I think about it, I'm trying to think, Jan, of, I mean, surely, in the cities that elect by district, when we do a goal-setting or something like this, the issue of district versus city as a whole, it's not a predominant theme. You know, it's not like in every city where there's districts, and then we do a retreat. It's like the district versus the greater good is always an issue, and it's not. And I think what happens is, over time, if you're a good government, okay, you figure it out. You figure it out.
And I think, I think that's right. You are good government. You have principles. And so, I think, yeah, you do figure that out. But you need to talk about it, which is why you're doing that check-in. So on this slide, just, you know, just...
Sorry, can I ask a follow-up?
Okay.
I'm not sure, I'm getting, okay, I'm going to be very blunt. I'm not sure I'm getting a very clear answer to my original question.
Well, you're not going to get a comment.
I'm not getting an answer. And I think you're telling me that you don't have an answer, so. But is, are there, have other cities put policies in place that have helped to mitigate it? You may not be able to eliminate it, but have there been policies in place, or ways that governance happens, that helps to dampen that effect?
Well, it all depends on what the city, what the...
Well, it all depends on what the city, what the leadership wants, is what I would say. It starts with leadership. And there's one city, I know the staff knows about, the city of Santa Maria, that just went to, it's a, it's actually a pretty big city. It's like 150,000, but it's, you know, on Central Coast and, you know, but they went to districts. And but they actually developed a little resolution saying, yes, we're elected by districts, but we're going to govern at large. And I facilitated that workshop with, with them. And they, they made a very conscious decision and they didn't want to go to districts, but they went to districts. You know, for lots of reasons, they, they decided to do that. But they know, just as I'm sure you know, it all depends on what the leadership wants. So you will set, the importance of what you're doing is that you are going to set the path and the tone for the future. Because norms get set. And so what you do over the course of a year, two years or so, that's going to set the foundation. And then future council members will say, oh, this is how we do things in the city of Santa Clara.
Well, there's a different take on it. And, you know, so I think to get at some of the concerns that Hassan is raising, and maybe from the opposite angle, in other cities that have, you know, had the council work by districts for a longer period of time, they have like rules committees or things like that. Which establishes in some ways, you could say, perhaps enables some of what maybe Hassan is thinking that we don't want to have. So I mean, one approach would be, I mean, we do have a governance committee, even though we haven't met very much recently. I mean, you could look at it and say, you know, is that something that we want to adopt? Rather than, you know, maybe you give yourself some time, but you, there can be, sometimes there can be an issue if you just kind of like watch it play out and see what happens. Because then you may already get yourself into a bad channel that you didn't want to get into. So that, we might want to get some thought to that. If, as I said, maybe the opposite of what some others, you know, have codifying how the prior, you know, the priorities that exist or the operational practices for districts to counteract that.
I was going to offer just some concrete examples of observations that I have seen in cities. Some of these we already have in place that could, could really support our efforts to be citywide. Are the public calendars, including council members that are in attendance at the meetings, allow for any person who suspects that there might be horse trading on votes to look at calendars and understand the activity. Disclosure on items, significant items of who the council member has interacted with or met with particularly that has influence or is a stakeholder in the decision-making before the item is, is taken. So council member Hardy would have to say, I, and for purposes of this item, I have met with Mr. and Mrs. blah, 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 and council member blah, blah, blah. So that there's some disclosure and transparency around that. May not be a value that is, is, you know, might be an overstatement or overpractice here. On, on agenda items, disclosure around which council district the action is taken in. We'll have to talk about that and what the implications are for governance and whether it's too territorial. But those are actions. And the one that was just in my mind, just, I forgot completely about it, slipped away, if I, if I remember. But those are some real concrete things that we can work and make value decisions around to say, does this, does this support the direction and the principles that we want to go toward? Or does it perhaps box the council district leadership role for a council member too much into?
Can I ask a question on maybe the last example that you gave, which was, oh, you can say it if you remember.
So the, what I have seen in cities that are very structured in a council district governance structure is that on land use decisions or in decisions that impact their district, whether it's programs and operations, there's always deference to the council member for which the district, the item is in. As, and it, it could, you could easily argue that that promotes the mini mayor, right? And so do we, do we as a, as a team want to start to support that practice? And what does it imply over time as a practice? I think it's worth evaluating that because once, you know, once it's, it's, the deference is provided, your observer who's not mindful of governance automatically assumes that the deference is given to you because you, you are in control and that's how you're.
I was going to bring that up exactly when you said on some agenda items, you may put what district that, that action is being taken in that may reinforce that notion of, of.
And so in cities where that's a value statement and a principle that they're guiding by, under, you know, it's not a good term, but under that mini mayor, it's very productive. It adds a lot of value. In cities where there's other goals and principles, it may not be a direction that this city wants to go in or something that may be thought through or put on the bike rack.
You know, what strikes me here, it just occurred to me, is that the, the meaning of looking out for the entire city is not clear to me. See, does, does the entire city mean the greatest good for the greatest number over the long haul? If that's what it means, I don't want to be a minority in this community. See, if it, if it means, no, the value pledge that you took in the beginning is pretty inclusive, right? So if the entire city is, the meaning of entire city is captured in the value pledge, that's a little different. If the meaning of the entire city is captured in the four values, then you've got a pretty encompassing, encompassing, encompassing city. The logic of district elections is that looking out for the entire city has systematically denied a segment of the city of the benefits of the greater good. That's the logic. I'm not saying it happens here, but that's the logic. So you really want to be able to find a way to articulate what the, what that, what entire city encompasses in your minds.
So I've put this slide up, these district-related questions, which are the ones that I heard from council members. And then at the end of the slide, the second slide from Deanna, she had a number of district-related questions as well. So what I'd like to do is to have us go through these and then go back to Deanna's second slide and make sure that we're addressing those as well. So you'll, you'll see those. And these are actually not in any priority order. I want to make sure that we get through all of these, and I think we can, actually. So we thought about asking you to prioritize, but I think that we can actually get through all of them. I think we can, so. So let's just start. What is a district issue? That's not an easy question, actually.
Land use.
Okay, so Patricia?
See, I'm having difficulty with all of this, I have to say. I mean, obviously, the district issue is something within your district, so it's a geographic boundary. But fundamentally, I, fundamentally, we have to go back to why we have districts in Santa Clara at this point for this election passed and the next election coming. And it's only because there existed in Santa, exists in Santa Clara racially polarized voting and the only solution imposed by judicial order to comply with the California Voter Rights Act was district elections. That has been achieved. But I think to a member, we still represent the entire city. We don't have the kind of districts like a large city like San Jose has that has grown up with different demographics. And each district does have district issues where you might have a demographic issue that just affects that particular population of the city. Or a residential issue because the neighborhoods are very different in the way they're made up. I don't see that in Santa Clara, at least at this time. I think all of our neighborhoods are pretty similar in terms of, you know, housing stock and having business areas within them and all of that kind of stuff. So the only thing I can, would conceive that is a district issue would just be based on geographic boundaries because it happens to be within those.
So something located in the district.
Located in the district.
Okay. Lisa, how.
Use is a district issue?
Land use as a district issue.
Right, and that would be because of the geography, because that's where it's located. I would agree with that.
Yeah, and we'll talk about land use, I noticed was, actually, that was one of Deanna's questions too. So is.
Land use is probably, in my opinion, one of the biggest issues.
One of the biggest.
In the district for the constituents that live in that district.
Who live right there.
Right.
Or who have businesses, perhaps.
What did, what did Karen and Raj, what did you hear?
Oh, yeah, from.
When you were running, I mean, what, what did, what did people tell you? Or didn't they know that you were district?
Raj. Karen?
Some people, you had to tell them that they were in District 3. And some people said, yes, I know I'm in District 3 and you better change this, 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 and this because I care about it. So there was the, the spectrum of, what, we changed something? To, yeah, and you better, you know, thinking you had all these powers.
Better fix it. I want a speed bump.
Yeah, right in front of my house and you better get it red marked with it, like I was supposed to go out there with the paint.
Okay, so, so putting it up on the board then, a district issue could be something specifically in the neighborhood that someone cares about.
Or in the park, in the city.
Yeah.
The city common area that happened to be within that district.
So it could be a neighborhood issue or an individual issue. And then Raj, what did you hear?
So I think the voters, constituents do understand the basic fundamental issues are citywide. There's a very good understanding that they do understand that. Like quality of life, it does not represent only in my district or some other district. It's citywide.
Yeah.
Traffic, it's not in my district only, it's a citywide. Affordable housing, it's not, pertains to my district, it pertains to every district in the city. So that part, every constituent understands that a lot. We are not the first one to be districting in California. That's a good part. We are not the first one.
Right.
And we can learn from other cities, look at their case studies, how they evolved. What were the problems they were facing? Of course, land use is a problem. And to be very frank, as a planning commissioner, land use is a problem for, from that perspective too. Or from that perspective, any council member who lives close to a particular area has the same issue too. Oh, I live close to that, how is it impacting me? So the basic three fundamentals we discussed, if we follow those, we can eliminate some of these issues which are cropping up. Those things. And one more thing I can put up, as the mayor is citywide, I think mayor, Lisa Gilmore right now, or for that matter, who's her next, can play a bigger role in some of these issues. Because he or she is the one who is the common among all the districts going, if we follow the, all the independent districts. So that can be very good. And one good thing about district, as the constituents put in, like face to the constituents. Like I, or for that matter, any council member running for election has a much more visibility in the district about listening to them, about representing them. We can make a holistic approach of making a decision citywide, but that communication flow would be much better. And that is practically what I noticed among myself. That was a much better, because I was able to precinct walk most of it. And that is something the constituents really liked it. Yeah, we are talking to a real candidate over here. If, if it was citywide, I would not have been able to do that.
You wouldn't have walked the entire city?
Almost, almost, right.
Yeah, it makes it more feasible.
Yeah, so those are basically some fundamentals. And when we do our priority-setting meetings in January, that can be a one good platform that we listen to all this, even, although we don't have districts right now, but fundamentally, we have districts. Each member is from different district. And that can be a one good platform where we can discuss the priorities of a district and priorities of the whole city and then prioritize fundamentally, okay, this is what we want to do next one year. And that should be universally accepted to all council members. So those are my thoughts on that.
Okay, so, yes.
Just to touch on what Hassan was saying a little bit, and on this question particularly, in other cities, a district issue, it goes beyond a geographic boundary. We have, in other cities, been asked to produce data on expenditures and budget as well as resource allocations by council district. And I just want to state early on for the record, because our systems, our citywide systems, we've never coded by, data by district, we would not be able to provide any information like that. And it, it immediately becomes a common question around issues of equity with resource allocation or time spent by staff. And it, we, staff is very concerned from that perspective that a district issue could go into providing reports by, with data that we just aren't able to produce.
Yeah. And the cities that do that are the really big cities too. You know, the city of San Jose, the city of Dallas, it's another city that we work with. In their districts.
That have the systems already coded.
Huge. And they're, they've been set up that way for 100 years or long, you know. So, but for a city like San Jose, that, or excuse me, Santa Clara, that would be very, very difficult and expensive to have to redo your computer system. I don't hear any council members asking for that, yeah.
I'll just add to this interesting thing we also do operationally with different districts. We have six beats with 10 fire districts, which do not overlap with the council district, as an example.
Wait, can you say that one more time?
We have six police districts with beats and 10 fire districts, which do not overlap with the seven council, or six council districts.
I don't think any of us are looking to change the basic setup or systems.
I don't hear that.
In the city by district.
I don't hear that at all. Yeah.
Jan, I think we missed, I think Raj said something about communication at the end. What did, what did, we missed.
About communication?
Right, so the two aspects of it, one is the convincing part of it. While you are convincing for elections, you are able to go through most of your district, being a smaller district versus a city, citywide. And you can have a better feedback from the residents.
Oh, yeah.
And, and it, holistically, it will be much better because all seven candidates will have a much better holistic back, feedback. It's not only about my district.
Yeah.
But each and every district will have a much better feedback because they will be talking to much bigger people on that.
Yeah, good. And then Kathy?
Yeah, I was, a district issue, for District 1, where I represent now, we have noise issues, you know, and that, that's not applicable to, I mean, I know there's different, there's various forms of noise, but I think like up on the north side now, you know, we have actually noise monitors, actually, because to track, track noise as a result. So that frankly, to me, is, is a district issue because there aren't any other districts that have noise monitors as a result of the airplanes, you know, they're taking off every two minutes and impacting the community.
Yeah. And as a result. So there's some things that are going to be specific to one district and your colleagues will respect that and, and deal with that.
Right.
Yeah.
There's also going to be an unequal amount of development in the different districts. District 1 has a lot of, you know, underdeveloped property. In fact, we're putting the largest development west of the Mississippi, City Place in District 1, as well as planned for all, you know, other developments. District, what are you, Teresa, District 4, 5? 4. District 4 is a, you know, built out, there's some, you know, reuses of land. It's more of a built-out district that doesn't deal, although there's going to be a lot of reuse of property in District 4, but it doesn't deal with the same issues as District 1. So the, I think there's very unique areas of Santa Clara. So, the, I think there's very unique areas of Santa Clara in everyone's district, and they're not all going to have the same issues.
Right. And, and mine was related with services. We have a large park, you know, we have a lot of parks.
Yeah.
But the problem is, is that when you're in a certain district, they're like, and everything goes into a priority schedule and funding, but now they're going to come to us and say, how come I'm not at the top of the list? And if you don't get me there, I'm not going to vote for you next round, kind of thing. So, I think what's going to happen is people in a district are going to have those kind of, how do I handle you, or what am I going to do? So, I guess the communication with the city manager is going to be able to either dispel some inadequacies in, in communication or just have them understand that it is citywide.
Mm-hmm.
We may represent a district, but we are, it is about the entire city. So, I've already heard that, well, you're my district representative, but you don't do this, I'm not voting for you anymore, kind of thing. And you're, and you're like, really? So, the double-edged sword comes in with the districts going from, I guess, the transition from at-large into a district system for us is going to be, I think the communication is the biggest, I guess, priority going forward on this. So, people understand what we're going through, that they're not going to be kind of mini-mayors. I think that we really have to communicate this well. I mean, we're at the 30,000-foot level with our mission statement, but as we come down, we need, they have to understand that we're caught between a rock and a hard place, too. We can't give them everything they want. Somebody will get something, but somebody isn't, there's a yes and a no.
So, I've...
How do you do that?
I've made a note of needing to communicate how priorities for services are set citywide. So, as we create a list of things, there's a body of work for staff that, that is being developed, as I'm sure the city manager is noting, because it, it is, because of the new system, you're going to have to have new communication systems.
Well, because right now, we get priority lists from staff.
Right.
But now, we have a district system, so that is going to make someone living in a district say,
Yeah.
you're my representative, go get me what I want. So, and that's not fair to the city manager nor to staff, when it's already been communicated that way. So, I think that there's like, I think that was, Hossam was kind of alluding to that. A district going from at-large, there's a double-edged sword, no matter how you're going to look at this, and we just have to figure out how we're going to get it, get everybody through. And it's only the first election. We have two new council members from a district, and then the rest of us are at-large.
No, you're a district manager.
I'm a district now, sorry, but we were voted in at-large, so...
I want to add that in, in San Jose, we would provide for council members reports that had the citywide updates, so that everyone had the same information. But naturally, constituents of districts would want, would go directly to the council member. The council member would follow it with staff, and then we would provide and generate a separate report of district-related inquiries. I can tell you, though, that, that took the staff of six people to track, monitor, seek answers. And so, while the, while the interest may be there to provide that response, we don't have those resources. And so, that would be an example of our organization being structured citywide, not council district.
Yes, it's just infeasible.
Can I, can I ask some...
Given the resources you have.
So, I, I want to, I want to go back to a comment that John had made about inequities and majority rule. And I have some concerns, or maybe I'll play devil's advocate for a little bit here, and maybe use a specific example, which is, I know it's something that everybody's familiar with. When you go to majority rule, when it, when you go to a district scenario, and we're not talking about majority rule from the perspective of the residents or the citizens who are voting for elections, but we're talking about majority rule at the dais. To give an example of something that was discussed recently, maybe about a year ago, about the curfew at the stadium. So, we have the stadium up in District 1, and all of the residents that live nearby the stadium are impacted by events that go beyond the curfew time. And so, in your, if you're in a scenario where now you're by district, it's majority rule, there was the discussion at the time about extending the curfew for potentially making the city a little bit of extra money. Now, while that may be beneficial for the whole city at large, it definitely impacts the quality of life for the people in that district. And now, majority rule, the people in that district will always be in the minority, and so they will lose that. And if you take that and extrapolate it to development projects in other districts, where if I'm not in that district, and I say, I don't care, it doesn't impact my quality of life, it's not going to increase traffic in my district or my neighborhood, then sure, it's going to bring additional revenue to the city. So, yes, I agree with it, while neglecting the impact of quality of life for the residents and for the council member in that district. And so, extrapolating that even, you know, to the infinite level, now everybody in the whole city is going to be disappointed, because every time that their district needs something or their quality of life is being impacted, the majority rule, the majority rules in the other way. And so, maybe you get the short end of the stick on this, in this district for that issue, and then you get the shorter end of stick on, in that district for that other issue, and then now everybody is just getting upset and maybe angry. So, what is the remedy to that? I mean, how do you remedy against majority rule for issues that are district-specific?
Patricia?
Thank you, city clerk, because it's sort of the same thing that you talked about earlier, how do you stop the vote trading? Because that's exactly what happens and why it happens. Which is why I think as a council as a whole, we need to set the expectation that we don't represent just our district. We represent the whole city. And if you want to say, in my district, the university is there. There's equally a lot of annoying noise issues in, around the university area, as there are around the stadium area. And yes, I get complaints about that, but I also hear from people on the north side. I know a lot of people living on the north side. I have lots of clients on the north side. They'll call me, too. So, and I get it both sides. Some people say, I don't mind. Some people say, I do. So, that's where we have to set the expectation of, we represent all of Santa Clara, to try to avoid some of those very fundamental issues of, of, of philosophy, of, of culture, of how we make decisions.
Well, and that's the reason I started with a principle, because this, and, and maybe you even want to change the language and say, we represent everybody, because you do. You still have your city council, you're required for votes on things. And I guess my fundamental answer to that is it's about leadership and it's about norms. You get to decide, how are you going to care about the city of Santa Clara? You're going to decide that. Are you going to care and nurture the community like you always, like, like you always have? And, and have a great future based on caring for everybody in this community? Or are you going to bifurcate yourself? I don't hear you saying you're going to bifurcate yourself. I hear you saying, you're going to do this, you're going to do this. And, and by being mindful of what goes on in your district, which is a good thing, mindful of what goes on everywhere, but governing for everybody, you can decide you're going to protect against what the city clerk is worried about. No one is going to impose that perspective on you. You're going to decide. You're in charge, basically. So, Mayor?
I think we, we all have intentions to act that way, and we all, and especially this council, we all have intentions. But I think what the city clerk said is probably, I'm just going to term it the political reality.
The worry.
That's the political reality. And I, I see that in neighboring cities. If there's an issue in a district, they go to one council member. And when you say, well, what about this over here, which is a citywide issue? Oh, well, you know, that's, you know, go to the mayor's office or go somewhere else. This is my district here. So, I think that is more politi, the reality of, of what may happen in terms of district-specific issues. But keep in mind that we're elected.
Yeah.
Elected by the people, and now our council members are elected by their district.
Right.
And at the end of the day, they are the ones that are accountable to the constituents in their district by election.
Right.
We're all accountable to the entire city, but we have to, we, we have to be mindful of just the political reality.
Absolutely.
Of what actually is there, as, when you're running for office, and, you know, you're held accountable by a much, much smaller group of constituents.
Yeah, that's right.
So, I, I, we have to keep that in mind.
Absolutely.
But we, I think we're all starting from a good place. I'm glad we're having this conversation.
Yeah.
Because we do have the good intentions.
Right.
Yeah. I was just going to say, I, I mean, I agree with what the mayor said, but something that just keeps coming to my mind is just common sense. I mean, you're going to govern with common sense. And, and, you know, look out for what you want to see represented in, in your city. I mean, you want to apply the same principles that you want in your district throughout the entire city to make sure that everybody's happy, because again, people don't like you, they're going to vote you out the next time the elections come around. So, I mean, the important thing is, it, common sense and listen to the people. And that's what we are elected to do, and, and that's what I hold true to do.
Good. Okay, let's, let's...
I don't want anybody to, I don't want anybody to misunderstand what I'm saying. I said I, you know, trying to play devil's advocate, be, you know, bring out the elephant in the room. There's a great council that is cooperative. But I think, as was brought up earlier, now, since we're making that transition, setting the cultural norm is very critical for the future of the city.
Absolutely. No question.
As the city continues, and, and, you know, council members change, and new elections happen, and then new people come in, and they believe that the culture is something when it's not, right? Or they, they should be, yeah.
See, I'm, I'm not sure what the cultural norm should be. Because, I mean, if you're all elected by district, okay, so let's just go to that point, you're all elected by district. So, District X wants a noise ordinance because of blah, 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 a curfew. And then, you're going to get, some people are probably going to vote for it, especially those who might have a similar issue, right? That might come up at some point. And some might then vote against it, because they're looking at the greater revenue kind of thing. That history doesn't disappear, right? That history doesn't disappear. I mean, after that vote, I mean, you're, you're thinking, well, so-and-so voted for me, why should I vote for theirs? They didn't vote for mine. I, I think those are na, those are very natural kinds of dynamics that I would think be extraordinarily hard to eliminate. It's just they don't become consuming.
Yeah.
Because not every, not, they're so, there, there probably are so few issues that really do that, you know, make those major kinds of trade-offs.
So, let's move on to the second question. It's a simple one. What's the answer to this? How will staff route calls from residents? That was a question from, from, in, in my interviews. So, a question comes in from a resident, and is the staff going to do anything different in the future than you're doing now? That's really the question.
No, we will take the call, route it to the appropriate department that can provide the service, and continue to respond. And continue to respond. I think it's complaints that may come into the mayor and council offices from residents. I think that's more what we're talking about.
Okay.
Um, because we do get a fair amount of comments, more like complaints, as they come in. And, and will they, how will they be routed? Is it routed to the entire council or the district representative? Usually, you know, get a lot of them, so...
So, it sounds like the practice is going to be to continue. So, they come in now to the mayor and council office.
Right.
That I have, you know, people are speeding on my street.
Right.
Okay. And so, then they'll get routed to the police department. And then they'll be responded back to the, well, to the, to the resident. Now, if it comes in to the entire city council, say, an email to complain, people are speeding on my street, then what happens?
So, we have a couple of ways that we respond. We have my blog, which has a council member inquiry section, where anything that a council member has asked, we respond in that section. We could do that there, and that way, the public knows also what we're doing. Our new CRM system allows for us to respond as we provide the, as we complete the complaint. And then we have data analytics around that, that we can share with the council there, citywide. And we can work with our mayor, council member staff, so that they continue to provide the information as they do to the full city council. I think what's most important is when a complaint comes in, especially for particular, it comes into mayor and council offices, but I would imagine the district representative would want to know.
Yes.
Specifically, that there's a complaint in their district.
Right. So, how will that work?
I've, at times, I mean, I've just, I mean, I know that the, it, the issue is going to be forwarded to the property department or to the city manager's office, but I will respond myself, just to let the person know that they're, you know, they're, they're being heard more than anything else, and, and they appreciate that.
I think that's something we have to work out within our office, the mayor and council office, that we make sure that the, you know, if everyone gets it, fine, but, but the council members, just, the, just their district, they have this particular attention that this is happening. I think that's going to be difficult, because staff in the field won't necessarily know the district boundaries and what district they're in. Our systems provide no indication for that already. And so, unless it's the council member telling staff, this is my district, because of their, their ability to recognize the address, that is going to take a lot of time to achieve that, that status of reporting. And the resident won't know what district they're in, so it will take looking up. And, you know, that would be a capacity, a capacity issue for us. But it's a great, it's one of the issues that we've been talking about at the executive and management level when this happens.
So, for the interim, okay, so you have a system problem, and I think that's, that's really important for everybody to know, that there's a system problem. But if a, what I'm hearing you say, Deanna, is that if a council member knows, say, a letter comes in, and, and Kathy, you know, oh, that's in my district, I want to know the results of that, then you could possibly let the city manager's office or through the mayor and council office, hey, let me know, because I want to know. I mean, is that possible?
That, if it's, if it's identified and the council member is aware of it.
Okay.
My district, then that's fine. But to the extent that it's dependent on the resident to know, or the staff to know, or the system to know, we're just, it's, it will be a while before we get there.
Yeah, so that's part of the partnership that actually was on over there. So, so I think that's just important to, to state, so that you're not expecting something that you can't get, but you can get it if you let the staff know. Okay, and Karen?
I had the similar thought.
And then Raj, sorry.
When Lisa talked about complaints come in, if they ask for, I want this to be directed to the person for District 2, or we're asked for by name specifically, that it makes sense to route it to that person. I mean, we just walked the entire district. I know exactly what's going on. I mean, if we're asked for by, by name or by district specifically, then it makes sense to route it to that person.
Is that what you'll be doing? Because if you know, I mean, yeah, by name, or a council member knows, that's my district. So, in other words, it's information. If staff has the information, they can help. Raj?
I just, I want to share, though, that in this, in this discussion, what is, what is a changed fundamental practice is that the council members begin to get different information. And it is, it is coming from the council who is putting that forward. And so, it's, it's an acknowledgement that that's...
Okay, good point.
It's not necessarily anything in our training in that manner, but, or from the organization, but it is something that we can do, and, and you'll, as, as you receive information by your council district, because of the relationship that we just talked about or the condition, you do start to have unequal access to the constituent issues.
So, that may be one of those things, that if you do end up with a six-month check-in, you may see how that, how that's working, and you might decide it's working fine, or you might decide, oh, you know, Karen's getting a lot more information than Kathy, or whatever it might be. So, okay, so that's a good point. Raj, I'm sorry to cut you off.
So, my point is, staff action will be the same fundamentally, whether it's coming from District 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6.
Yeah.
It will be the same.
Mm-hmm.
The only difference, we are talking about the communication with the particular council member in that district. So, I can think of one solution over here. If we have an online portal which accepts those complaints, add district, belonging to District so-and-so, so that staff will proactively know, oh, resident of District 4, resident of District 5, so they can get that information right away. And that way, staff doesn't have to do anything exceptional, going beyond what they need to do in regular, to find out where this resident is. But we need to educate our resident, hey, fill that up, fill that column up. And second thing, partial solution... And second thing, partial solution, District's voter data is available. And if some proactive council member wants to find out if they, because mayor and council gets same email, all of them getting the same email. If they really want to find out, okay, where this resident is, if they have address on that file, we can also look into our login.
You can look it up.
Look it up and look at that, and that can be, for the time being, that can be a solution. If you really want to facilitate that, and you want, really want to coordinate better, instead of depending on the staff to get back to us, oh, where this, you didn't report me which district it was and all that stuff. There can be some short-term solution. And down the line, we can find out some more feasible and CRM solutions which can maybe probably track down, oh, where this address is. If they put address and it can correlate directly, oh, this address goes to this district. Easy, easy to do on analytics point of view, on data analytics point of view. So from staff perspective, I think their response will be the same to any problem.
That's what I hear.
Whether they're in any district. So that should not worry. It's only the communication issue with the particular council member for that matter.
So I think that's, that was a good clarification for expectation management on that one. Okay. So the next one is, how will staff prioritize requests from council members? So I think, and again, that came from, from, in my interviews, with the notion behind that is that you now have six districts. And what if, making this up, that all of a sudden, six council members are going to have a list of things that they want staff to do? What's, you know, how is staff going to prioritize those? But I'm sure that you have a process now for putting forth things. Some are routine operations, the speeding request, as example. You send it to the police department to evaluate. But talk about that.
Okay, I think we have a process, and that's pretty much, we go to the city manager.
Okay.
We have one-on-ones, and we can communicate to her, because it's a monthly thing that we do. But let her know what's going on, and then let her decide how the priority is going to happen. Because we have staffing issues. And if it's something that she can directly take care of, like in two minutes, that's great. But sometimes, you know, things go on hold, or a week later, or whatever. It's not like she's not going to do it. It's just that she has to kind of, I look at her as the air traffic controller. And we all go see her. And then that way, she disseminates whatever has to go where. Because we're not telling, you know, we did have a problem before where we had certain council members would go directly to staff and say, take care of it.
Okay, I see.
That's no longer exists, which is good. At least Deanna has an idea of what's coming in from whatever direction, so.
And we did also put in place a policy, like, so obviously, so we, at the 30,000-foot level, we have our goal-setting process where we're prioritizing, and where, you know, we're even, you know, we're voting and agreeing that this is going to be, what's going to be worked on. And then, you know, kind of in response to some of the things that were happening, we did, through the governance committee, we looked at our policy and said, if you want to add something to staff's plate, or if it's going to take any meaningful time to either research it, or it's going to take some money, you had to bring it back to the council.
Okay.
And it was supposed to be voted on because you're, you know, because you're changing the priority plan. So I think if we
Stick to that.
Stick to that, as opposed to, you know, I mean, everybody kind of gets tempted to say, oh, this is just quick, or this is just easy, or it won't, you know, I really need you to do this. And then, you know, and afterwards, some of us are saying, oh, what, when did we decide to work on that? You know? So I think if we just kind of follow what we
Stick through the agreed-upon process. So, Deanna, from your vantage point, is that sufficient?
I think it works. I just wanted to add that there's also another practice that I've, I've used very infrequently here, but it does come up from time to time, is to the extent that a council member asks for information that is on a future council agenda, just for them to prepare themselves, I generally send it out to the full council so that at the meeting, one council member won't have a report, and the other won't, for lack of not, for lack of not asking. It allows for me to say, and I try to do it unattributed, so that a council member asks for this report, I'm forwarding it to the full council. Doesn't come up often, but it has come up a couple of times where I will do that.
So what I'm hearing is, you have a process, so you'll stick to that process. Okay. Okay, good. The next one is, will the city manager continue to provide information to the entire council?
Just answer the question.
The answer is yes. Okay. The next one, if somebody calls me and they are in another district, can I help them?
Absolutely.
Okay. So somebody calls Teresa, but this person is in Debbie's district. Can Teresa help the person?
Should they say, this isn't, you're in District such-and-such? And by the way, just to educate them, and yes, I'll help you, but I'm just
No, it's, it's, it's an important question, actually. So that you don't end up with conflicts between yourselves.
And then they say, you never told me you're not my, you know, I'm not in your district. This is, believe me, just going through this election, this is a very new thing to our residents. So pushing out the communication about this is, is really good. But how, should we start educating them, you know, when they call for, for a specific, you know, street issue or something? Do we say, I'm happy to talk to you, but I recommend you also talk to, you know, so-and-so in your district? Or, like, what, I don't, I'm throwing this out for discussion.
This probably goes back to the issue about culture again, right? Which is, if we're trying to develop a culture that every council member represents, you know, the, the entire city, you know, to say, yes, I can help your issue even though you may not be in my district.
No, I'm wondering, do we bring out the, yes, of course, I'm going to help you. And I also, you know, recommend you talk to so-and-so in your district.
Yeah, Patricia?
I would not want to do that. People will call you because they feel comfortable calling you. They either know you, or they have some contact with you, or they see you and they want to talk to you as opposed to somebody else. They're calling you specifically.
Because they know you, you're saying?
There is no reason to say, but, because, because the council member's not going to be the one to resolve the issue that the constituent's bringing to you. It's going to go through the city manager, and the city manager's going to assign it to the right person. That's all that needs to happen. It's not a matter of educating, especially when the boundaries are fluid. Somebody may not be in that same district the next time they call. So I don't, I don't think it's necessary. And I think it does add, as the city clerk pointed out, to the concept that it's divisive, it's divided. It's, you know, I'm going to help you, but I, I really shouldn't. I mean, that's kind of the implication. Or somebody else can help you better, but they don't want to call that person they would have called them to begin with. So why, why do that? Why bring it up?
I'm not hearing the message that, so far, I'm not hearing the message that you should not be helping somebody who calls.
No, no, of course, you help. I think my point was, you help everyone you call, but if you don't, if you don't say, hey, I, you know, I, of course, I'm going to help you, but just, just for your information, you're in Councilmember Chahal's district. And you should also, I recommend you talk to him as well.
In addition, is what you're saying.
Because if you don't, and they find out, wait a minute, did I waste my time talking to her when I should have been talking to him? And I'm saying, you know, I'm hypothetically saying, no, of course, I'm going to help you. But I also, to be more helpful, you know, did you know we have districts? Oh, I didn't know. Okay, well, here, you should also talk to so-and-so. So I, I'm wondering, for practical purposes, if that is something that maybe the council members think about? I mean, we can't say, yes, say it. Maybe some don't want to do it, and some want to do it. But is, is practical sense, you're helping them, and you're also educating them?
Yeah, so back to Patricia and then Kathy.
That's supposed to my very point. Why is it more helpful to go to your district council member than going to any council member? Because a district council member's not going to do anything different than we, any council member would do. And that is refer to the, the problem to the city manager. So that's why I say the implication is, is, it creates, in my mind, it creates divisiveness among the public. And, and I just don't see where it's helpful.
Can I suggest a different approach?
Well, hang on one second. Kathy first.
No, I was just going to add, I mean, I've actually already encountered this issue. And, and the people reached out to me, and they were not in my district. And, but I helped them, but at the same time as well, I let them know that really this issue is in Councilmember O'Neill's district. I said, it's not that I don't want to help you, and I did, but at the same time, I want you to know that, you know, this is Councilmember O'Neill's district, but at the same, because I don't want to step on her toes. I don't want her to be out of the loop and, and, and to find out, you know, that I've been helping, you know, her constituents. So I, I think it's important to be open and transparent so that people don't feel, you know, any kind of dissension, you know, amongst the council. I mean, it's, again, it comes down to communication, and I think that's part of it.
That, that's what I was going to say. Even though it may not be your district, but just to give the person, the other council member, the heads up, the FYI, this is going on in your district, I'm just getting, you know, like, let's work together, let's figure this out. I don't want people to feel that they've been isolated and that they're not going to be, I just think it's more of a communication and, and just a nice way to say, or interact with another council member and say, did you know this was going on? And, you know, let me work with you, or if you don't want, whatever. But I just think that it makes us work better together because we're, we're informing each other what's going on. And then the same thing goes back to the city manager. I got a phone call from a constituent and said, I've got these buses driving down my street. What am I supposed to do? I went to Deanna. Then she forwarded me to staff and said, okay. And then the staff worked out, you know, the information, whatever. And they communicated back to the resident, and they asked me if I wanted directly do it, or did they want to do it? I mean, everything to me was a process, and it was, we all worked together. I don't think there's trying, we're trying to be decisive against each other. I think it's more of a communication issue with all of us. And then goes right back to the 30,000-foot level of, we are working for the entire city, not as a district. And that becomes inclusive and transparent. So that's all I want to say on that one.
It sounds like it's sort of a customer service thing if somebody calls. I mean, kind of to Patricia's point and Kathy's point. I mean, you, you took the call, and then you told Teresa, you know, someone called, and it's something that's going on in your district, should be aware of it, but I answered their question. So, because that, that would be sort of strange if you didn't answer the question, say, oh, can't answer your question. So, but, so that's what I'm hearing. Okay. Yeah. Now, you had a suggestion.
I also wanted to offer the perspective that when we were discussing in the Charter Review Committee about districting, one of the big concerns that had come up was that in the past, residents could have a say on seven, of the seven seats up there, right? Because they could vote at large for all six council members, plus the mayor. And now, the, the concern is that they only have a say on two people up there, the mayor and their district. And it's possible that you may have no representation on there if the person you voted for mayor was not elected, or the person that you voted for, for your district council seat, was not elected. So who represents you at this point? Or who is willing to listen to you, or who's somebody that you're comfortable, at the very least, going to talk to? And so it may be that, from a resident's standpoint or a constituent's standpoint, that they don't feel comfortable to talk to their district representative because that wasn't the person they supported, and they didn't like that person, and they supported their opponent. But they feel comfortable talking to somebody who is not their district representative, and they feel that they can get some traction by talking to that person rather than their own. So I think that, that's a perspective as well. Because, you know, maybe, maybe that, maybe that constituent doesn't want you to tell them, well, go speak to your council rep, because they don't want, they don't like that person. Or, or they don't want, you know, their council rep to know that they went and spoke to somebody else. So that's also, I mean, that's a very sensitive consideration as well, from the perspective of a resident.
Sure.
Yeah, you'd use your judgment then.
Yeah, good judgment. Good judgment is, is important in anything. So, that's right. Okay. Can a council member have monthly meetings open to anyone in the community? Yeah, okay. So somebody says, I want to have a monthly meeting, anybody can come. Okay. I don't see any. So that's
Can I ask a follow-up question to that as clerk, in my official capacity? So, and I guess the next one is about the town halls, which is also the one that I wanted to bring up. There was some comments from community members, or ideas from them, about doing the town halls in the districts where one of the town hall panelists would be the representative from that district. What are your thoughts around, does that reinforce the, the fiefdoms or the district mini-mayor's idea? One of the, one person during the campaign, or during the election campaign, was suggesting that maybe the council members rotate so that it breaks down that barrier of, no, you can only speak to the council member from your district.
Let's hold that thought for a minute, because I want to wrap up this one first. So the answer on six is yes, but I wanted to give Deanna an opportunity. The way I understood the question on number six of holding the monthly meetings open to anybody is that that would not involve staff. That was the way I understood the question. I just wanted to make sure that you didn't have any questions about that one. Okay. That was your understanding, too. Okay. So then, moving on to the town halls. So the, the question that came from one or more council members is, how is staff going to handle it if, if council members want to have town halls in their districts? Because then that gets to a staff capacity issue. That was really the question that came during the interviews that I had from council members. That, you know, if we want to have town halls, great, but how is staff going to handle that? So I, I would like to offer Deanna an opportunity to maybe comment on that from a staff capacity perspective.
I'm, I'm interested in hearing what the council would like to do. Because what I'd like to do, if, if the answer is yes, that there is an interest in having town halls, then we need to make sure that they're sequenced appropriately so that we have the appropriate resources on hand, rather than having two or three at once. We wouldn't be able to support that.
That's right.
But being realistic around the frequency, the sequencing, and also being able to speak freely about what the capacity issues may be, given that we already have a number of community meetings that we support. And adding additional ones, we'll need to look at how we prioritize those.
I think that in terms of transparency and communication, town halls is a great idea. I think we should bring this up in our priority-setting session.
Oh, okay.
As to how we do it, and do we do it, you know, one in each district once a month, or something like that, or some kind of sequencing every quarter? I don't know. And, you know, location, number, location, and what does that entail? I think that would be a priority-setting session item.
To dive into the detail.
To really dive in, in terms of how often, who, what, when, and how much.
Any other comments from Raj? You had a comment on that?
I agree to that. And as regards, like, the council members can hold as many meetings they want to hold by themselves.
Their own.
All by themselves.
Without staff.
But when we come back to staffing, then we have to prioritize, okay? How many can be supported? And once that is there, then that can be rotated. Let's say they can only, only support once a month. And I would really like to do that because staff attending those meetings can, some of the things can be solved right away over there, probably. Because you know what's going on, and the staff knows what, decision-makers know what's going on, and they can be solved right there and then, probably. But we don't want to overburden you. So those meetings, say, month, once a month, can be rotated to different districts. As you mentioned, sequencing, we can do that.
Let me, let me just add a little bit more, because now that I heard your idea of the frequency, I, I have to practice my flexibility to speak up. I am, I am already concerned about the frequency of council meetings. We tend to be meeting, toggling between council meetings, stadium authority. And a regular Tuesday here goes till about midnight. And then it's the, in order to produce the packet by Friday, all of the reports need to be completed by Wednesday and Thursday so that our, our slow, clunky, granica system can start to produce by Friday. Which means that if for, if our Tuesday is a 20-hour, 21-hour day, staff has to get back to work the next day. I have a really hard time with our staffing schedule and just the realities around federal laws and employment practices of scheduling staff. And there's a problem when there's a planning commission meeting, which often happens the day after a council meeting. And the staff that has supported the director in getting to the meeting. So to the extent, then, that we're already having council meetings, stadium authority meetings, council meetings, and adding council committee meetings and our external regional meetings, to add a monthly meeting and any other sessions, we, I've only heard this term twice in other, two other cities. We are already near administrative collapse with workload and our, our collapse with workload and our, our antiquated systems. We're in, I'm mindful of your comment of, let's just put a portal together. We're working on 34 different IT projects at once.
Wow.
So that we can catch up on all the modernization that we had been delayed or deferred. So manual systems here, plus the frequency of meetings and clunky systems, I just have to put that out there, that I did not have a month in mind.
Okay. So it sounds like the consensus is to discuss it during priority setting, because it is a staff capacity issue, and then you can decide.
It's a real stressor for staff, and I, I have to be their voice.
Okay. So you can decide how important it is stacking up against other priorities that the council has. Okay. Good. Great.
Oh, do you, I had...
No, go ahead, Debbie.
I got bounced, but that's okay. I have to agree with the city manager. The effective, the effectiveness of a town hall within the city of our size, I feel should be led by the mayor, number one. And, and specifically to a topic that needs to be put out to the community, not just some, let's have a town hall meeting because we need to have one. And then put a couple of, now that we have districts, a couple of districts together. So it would be District 1 and 2, one town hall meeting, and then 3 and 4 and 5, however it divides out. But to move it around the city, I think works for us, especially when the topic is about the city. Not just to have them because you just need to say whatever you need to say, because yes, the staff has to put this stuff together, where we're going to do it. I mean, this is all, a lot of information. But I think that the lead should be the mayor, only because she is the spokesperson for us. She is elected citywide and will continue to be that, where we go to the districts. So, um, yeah, I think we definitely should move it and have it as a priority thing, so that we all can say what we want to say. But those were my inputs from things that happened already in, in the community. So that's why I wanted to give my two cents on that.
Okay. Yeah, no, I've, I've made some notes, and no decisions today, except to send it to priority setting. That's the only decision. Okay. Very good. Okay. Number eight, on Nextdoor, should council members only communicate with the people in their districts? Or the council members that, that do Nextdoor, can you just continue with your practice? I think that was really the question.
I, I think right now, we have a good system in our city, is better in communication, where they are pushing out issues to the community that they need to know. I know the police department has their own little separate thing that they do. I get, I get one every day from the police department, and it could be related to anything that's going on. But we also have the e-notify that go to residents, and I've gotten really good consensus back on that. I think that if we push out more and more information, our residents are a little bit happier. So that we have a fatality traffic accident that happened, that came up on my Nextdoor immediately, and people were able to negotiate around and get to work. So there are a lot of benefits to putting that much information out, because people really appreciate it, what's going on, and they're aware of it. So I think that if we're going to continue to do this, I might want to elevate it maybe a little bit more to the point where somebody in our communications is on top of everything that happens. Or especially if something happens, the city manager, and she needs that out now. So that's why I think it's really good to continue that.
I don't think Nextdoor is set up for six council districts.
No, it's not. No.
They're, all the neighborhoods are blended, and they're, so...
Yeah, actually, I, I raised the issue. Yeah, I had raised the issue, actually, when we met, because I knew that the way Nextdoor is set up in the north side, that it crosses Montague, uh, excuse me, yeah, because it crosses Montague Expressway and encumbers the whole Montague area all the way out to Tremble, which is now District 2. And so I've been communicating, you know, with another, I mean, I'm communicating with another district, and I don't believe that Councilmember Chahal has access to that Nextdoor. So I'm basi, so I mean, I, I'm, you know, as we were saying, you know, we're communicating with everybody, but at the same time, he does not have the ability to communicate with his constituents as a result of how Nextdoor is set up.
Yeah. Okay. So, sounds like you're just going to continue, continue doing. So... But that's the value of, of these questions getting raised, so you don't create misunderstandings. Now you know the answer to it. Just keep on doing what you're doing. Okay. Number nine, should the mayor call on the council member from a district where a project is located to speak first? Okay. So, do you want to explain your question?
No, I did that a couple of times.
Okay.
I think it was just the member O'Neill, and council member, I mean, Vice Mayor Watanabe, and they were surprised. And I thought, okay, well, I would like to hear from them first. I just thought as a matter of practice, but I don't know, you know, how the council feels about that. Obviously, people are going to wait to hear what they have to say. So that's just, just throwing it out there, whatever the council pleasure is.
I mean, I have mixed feelings. I mean, I appreciate having, you know, the first opportunity to, you know, you know, set the tone for, you know, the issue and how I feel about it. But at the same time, too, if it's something controversial, you might want to hear from everybody else before you give your opinion. So that's where I, I have mixed feelings.
Yeah, Patricia.
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman, Member Watanabe, for that comment, because I think that's, that's a good point. It also brings up a point city clerk brought up earlier, is that you, you are more likely to be conflicted out of, especially a land use issue in your own district than anybody else.
Yeah.
But frankly, it's, it's sort of, to me, it, it, it almost implies that other council members wouldn't know as much, or wouldn't care as much. And we had a, a very small land use issue last, month ago, a small project, but it impacted the whole neighborhood, and the neighbors had all contacted all of us. And it was an issue that I cared about very much. And, you know, I, I probably would have felt a little resentful if, you know, if, if I weren't able to speak first. I think actually I may have spoken first. So I don't know. It just, again, I think it just, it, it can set the tone and create a culture where it looks, we're concentrating on districts and not the city as a whole, if we, if we do that.
Yeah, there's pros and cons. I mean, it's, it's, it's not an easy question. I don't know. Raj, what are your thoughts? Do you have an opinion about it?
Yes, right. Like, I agree to Councilmember Watanabe, like, because you want to hear back from other people what they think about it, basically. And that's where the politics comes, right?
I know.
I mean, the mayor can always...
You want to be called last.
Yeah, exactly.
They don't want to be called first.
True, true. Okay.
We always, we always have the agenda, we have the agenda before the meeting, so you know what, you know, if there's a public hearing on something, that it's going to affect a certain district, you can check with the council member to find out, do they want to speak first, or they, do they have a preference?
Yeah, maybe it's a preference to, I can ask.
It could be an option, then.
This is another thing, and I, I don't think I see it up there, but if there's an item, especially land use and other very big, important items, are the staff going to put it down, what district number the property's in, so that we may know, or the public may know? I mean, here, guys, the reality is, we have districts now, so we can't pretend that we don't have them. We have them. So how are we going to communicate that out there, that this is, like, will it be identified on the agenda, or is it on the staff report, or?
We've left that for you.
Okay. So that's, I mean, for...
We've thought about it, and, and we have a couple of other housekeeping items like that, too, that we can ask.
Small item, but it's still something in terms of...
Yeah, no, let's...
Identification.
No, let's talk about that in just one second. Just to sort of wrap up on this, I heard a, basically a proposal that it be optional. So if, if there's a...
I can inquire ahead of time.
Yeah, if a council member...
Want to speak first or not.
...whose issue is in the district wants to speak first, let the mayor know. But if you don't want to speak first, then you, then you wouldn't be called on. That's kind of how I'm hearing it.
Maybe we can leave it where if they, the council member would like to speak first, because they feel very strongly, and they want to set the tone and the leadership, just let me know.
Then let, okay.
Just let me know if you want to speak first on actually any issue, really, that I'm, feel strong, this is my district, and I'm, you know, leading this in my district, and I want to speak first. Then of course, you get the courtesy of speaking first.
The responsibility, then, is placed on the council member to let you know, as opposed to placed on you to ask, which sounds like a huge burden on the mayor.
Right. So just let me know.
So placed on the council members to say, hey, I really want to speak first.
Otherwise, it's by the lights, whoever.
Okay. Okay, good. All right.
That's good to know.
Good. Now, no, I mean, you need to know. You need to know.
I know.
Okay. So now the question of, of having a identification of district on certain things. Deanna is...
I'm speaking most specifically about land use issues.
Okay, land use. What are your thoughts about that?
I was just checking on the housekeeping stuff of items.
Yeah, go ahead, on that one, since we're...
We've had a couple of items that have come up recently as we prepare for the transition. One of them is just the stationary, and we are in process of updating the stationary to add our two new council members. And what the question was asked, do we put council members' names by, by district on the stationary? Or, and do then, do we prioritize them from District 1 through District 6, or do we continue with the mayor, vice mayor, and then an alpha order? So that question came up in terms of how to know, how to know how to do either printed materials that have that requirement that we list our city council. The plaques before you are all just your names. Would you like for us to put your district below your name, so that there's a reference there as one item? On agendas, should I just go through my list, and then we'll...
Yeah, and then...
Well, let's take those, I don't know.
Okay.
Okay, I only have, I have about two or three more.
Forget what was on the first item.
So, okay, printed materials. How do you want your names?
Plaques, the council district plaques. Oh, you, I thought I was going to do my list first.
Go do your list, and then we'll go through.
So the plaques up on the dais.
Oh, oh, okay.
Or even as we, or as we print this here, the name tense. Agendas, council meeting agendas, where we item, where we list our council members, council agenda items, listing council districts.
Oh.
How we introduce council members and acknowledge them at formal events. Business cards. Under printed materials, there's a list of items like calendars, business cards, things of that's inside Santa Clara, or, you know, there's just a bunch of little printed items that we need to understand how the council would like to be represented.
Okay. Okay. So let's go through these, and then we do still have two others. I didn't realize that, what that list was, but...
Can I add one more item? So if you look at a capital budget project, a capital budget document, oftentimes capital budget projects are identified by district as well, like parks, library, et cetera. So that's another consideration.
What's the question? I'm sorry, Walter.
Is the capital projects in budget by district?
Oh, wow.
What's going on?
We would need to, well, actually...
That's going a little too far. That's going a little too far, Walter.
What I'd like to, yeah, I do think, because we are in process of implementing a capital budget software system that allows for us, and it already doesn't, it doesn't query by council district. So...
Too much work.
Making that change would be a manual change.
That would be very helpful.
I'm sorry, I said too much work. It's...
I, I'm going to start, because I think the way the, just the names and the, in terms of the stationary and printed materials, I believe they should say what district number. I just looked at San Jose. I, I just know from practical experience, many people will find out what district they live in, and they will have no idea who represents them. So they'll say, I'm in District 1, I'm in District 2, who's on, who's my representative? So if we start to identify the district numbers, at least on, on the stationary, maybe on the agendas, I, I don't know about, you know, things that are more, you know, at, at events, I don't, ceremonial, maybe not, but, but I, I think that we should start identifying which district, so that our community can identify who their representative is, and they may not know our names, but they'll know what district they live in.
What's the view of the other council members? Is there a consensus on that, Patricia?
See, I disagree. I think all of this identification by districting really gives more the impression that our sphere of influence is more limited. If you take a large city like San Jose, that's had districts forever, their district representative has its own staff.
Right.
Has its own budget, has its own funds that they can spend, they can spend just in their district. We don't have any of that, nor will we, nor should we. So I don't want to be just representing District 1. I represent all of Santa Clara, and I think every one of the seven of us do the same. We represent all of Santa Clara. And I don't want the public impression to think they can only either come to me, especially as our city clerk has pointed out, they may not like me. They may not have voted me and, and don't want to talk to me about something in Santa Clara. So I don't want to, I don't want to give that impression. And again, it just goes to, are we a district representative, or are we a citywide representative? And to me, we are all citywide representatives. And all of that identification by district really gives the impression that, that we have a narrow sphere of influence. And I just, I just want to avoid that. Yes, it's, it's true, we don't, we have to be transparent about it, we can't hide it, we can't pretend like it doesn't exist. But it exists for very different reasons than it does in large city districts that have districts, or wards, like the East Coast practice, or large city practice, Chicago, you know, those kinds of cities. Here, it's San Jose, or, well, San Francisco's a bad example, because they're county, they're not even a city council. I mean, but it's a city and county. So, so that, that to me is, is the other side of this coin. And, and I think...
Yeah, it's the other side.
I think it goes a long ways to public perception as to what and who governs them and who represents them.
Okay. Debbie, and then I think you're going to have to maybe vote.
Okay. To start off with the, the plaques on the dais, and, and I understand the problem that the staff has, because we were court ordered to do districts.
Yes.
So, we can't have it both ways. Either, we're going at the 30,000-foot, you know, the mission statement clearly states we are going to govern as a city.
As a city.
But to the, to the confusion out there with the residents, I think the identity of a plaque that says, yes, we're representing the district, just to get them used to the situation, it is the first election. So we need to be a little bit more transparent in whatever. I, I understand we're not going to be our own little mini-mayors, but at the same time, there's a level of confusion out there as to what we're doing and how we're doing it. I think putting our districts underneath there will give the people a, a better sense of community, and they, and they get it. But if we continue to put out the narrative, we will always vote in a city capacity, that if we keep that going, that will, that will be good with me. As far as your other things, let's see, agendas, it, I, I, it doesn't really matter. I mean, it, it could be on there, but to me, it's not like a big item. Adding agenda items and list the districts, I think staff time is just ridiculous. They already have enough to do, and I don't want them to start quitting. And then we have how to introduce council members as part of, from my past experience being on the council a little longer. We were always introduced by seniority. That denoted how we were seen in the, outside. So it didn't go alphabetical, it went by seniority.
Oh, by seniority.
Because you were given your due for being on council and serving your community. Business cards, I mean, we kind of switch out. I, I was a vice mayor in 2015, and I have a bunch left. But we rotate that. So if we change the business cards now, and to, if we change the, the system, if it doesn't be six districts and it goes to three districts, I mean, do we waste our time doing that?
I see. Good point.
I mean, I think we can identify and save a lot of wasted time of printing more business cards. And then to list the CIP, I'm sorry, Walter, to list the CIP by district, no. That, to me, will engage so much more going on. We have a map, and I think if we put that map out on the website, and if people see a land use thing that is coming towards us, or CIP, they can say, oh, that's in my world. I want to come to the council meeting and voice my opinion.
Yeah.
I don't think adding, I think we're adding too much layer on here, to be honest with you, and I want to take it back, so...
Yeah, and I think Deanna has a comment.
I, I think just from the comments that I've heard already, I think this needs an affirmative vote by the council.
Yeah.
And I think it needs to be a very simple vote, whether to, as a whole, reflect council districts, or not reflect council districts.
Oh, okay.
Because to the extent that there's different categories, these are items that have already come up, but to the extent that there's a yes on that category, no on that, we're not going to get it right. We will make a lot of... We will make a lot of mistakes. And I think it's, it, it should just be, yes, do we do it, or no, do we not do it? And then we provide clear instructions throughout the organization.
Okay, so, so the question is to add the district designation.
One more thing. I mean, this may be an item that we continue to do things the way we're doing it, and we do, and the six-month check-in, see how it's going. I mean, it's just an idea, so.
Yeah, well, I think you're gonna do a six-month check-in, maybe?
I, I really, I really think the council districts have to be listed somewhere. We have to list them somewhere, if it's just on the dais.
On the dais.
Or, I mean, and it also should be, you know, next to our pictures like San Jose has on the... We, we cannot be in denial that we're in districts. And I know things may change, but for now, it's court ordered. We're in districts.
Okay. So maybe could I...
The, the, the most minimum amount that we can show, that we're not trying to hide this, we are in districts, the better, whether it's just the dais or on the cards. Because the cards change every, every two years anyway. So, yeah, I, I don't see going all the budget and all, you know, really drilling down. But we have to show our community somewhere, who represents what district. They need to know that.
Okay, so could you pose the question?
So the question is, does the council want to be reflected by council district? And what I'm suggesting that, obviously by council consensus, do we bring it back on January 15th for an affirmative vote by the council so that there's certainty with respect to how we implement it?
Right.
Or do we postpone it for the priority setting session?
Hold on, on the 15th.
Do you wanna just get us a...
Okay.
Do you wanna do that?
An agreement here? Okay, so how, let's just take a vote. How many council members would like to be reflected by district in printed materials to be determined which printed materials, okay?
And as well on the internet page, on the webpage.
On the webpage, yeah.
On the website.
Okay, if the answer is yes, raise your hand.
Well, I, it's, I, I can't be...
This is a consensus. It's just a sense. All it is is a sense. It's just a sense, it has to be brought back.
It's yes or no because we're not, what I'm trying to get away from is the if this, then that, or the different categories. It's just either yes or no.
Yes or no.
So that the instructions are very clear.
It's just a sense, and then you have to formalize it if you, you know, in some, in some ways.
Well, I'd like to ask a clarifying question because only two council members at this point have been elected by district. So even though the other council members may individually live in the remainder of the districts, they were not elected by district. And so would it be appropriate to list them as a council member for that district when they have been elected at large?
Whether or not they were elected by districts, they still represent those districts.
And I believe in...
It's court ordered.
I was just gonna say, I believe in the court order. It says that they represent those districts now.
Okay.
There's something like that.
Yeah.
We, so we have to reflect it somewhere. I don't believe it's an all or nothing because there's so many things there that don't make sense as to why, where we would put it, put it. We wouldn't go all the way. It was just that we have to reflect it somewhere that's visible to the public.
On the website.
Okay, so if, if you agree that it needs to be reflected in some way, some visible ways, raise your hand.
Yes.
Okay, in some ways. Okay, so it's unanimous in some ways. So then, Deanna, you get to figure out what ways it is on.
And, and we're very mindful of cost, and we're very mindful of work, so let's put it that way. We're very mindful of that.
Lisa, I was just thinking, remember when we had the seat situation? It was only, I believe, on the website, and I'm not even certain it was on the business card.
Well, that, yeah, that...
And so if we...
That's a little different than this, but yeah.
But, but it was still there, and it was just called out. So I have no problem with the website, possibly even business cards, but nobody understood the seat situation anyway.
Well, this is a little bit different because there is a defined area. So let's leave it, we'll say at a, at a minimum, leave it to the city manager at this point. Okay, to be TBD.
I, I put down to be determined.
If we wanna do more than, no, if we wanna do more than a minimum, then it's TBD.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, so we're getting through our list. We've got two more. How can the mayor help individual council members? Well, number 10 and 11. I, I think actually we've dealt with number 11 quite a bit, but number 10, how can the mayor help individual council members?
That would be for the council members to tell me.
Yeah, exactly, but it was, it was a question.
What do you need from the mayor in order for you to be effective?
There you go. That's a better way of putting it.
I can, I can say some practical things because since we were court ordered into districts, I've had a council member to ask me to accompany them to a meeting with a constituent, with an issue in their district, and I think to be accessible and available to help the council members in any way, which I would anyway. But I've already had practical, you know, requests. District, they're all city related. I've been doing that anyway, but yes. That's just one.
So it sounds like what I'm hearing you say is that you're available to the council, so, okay. And it, is that anything new? No, okay, so that's a continuation, but it's a reaffirmation that you're available, okay. And I think we've dealt with number 11 quite a bit on the trading votes, right? Does anybody need to talk about that anymore? No? Okay. Okay. So, so Deanna, I just wanna touch base, make sure that we've dealt with... I think we've dealt with your items as well, haven't we, on number 12? I think we've dealt with yours, your questions on districts, okay. So we're doing very well on our time. So we, we have some guidelines, some overall principles. You've answered your questions. You've determined in terms of protocols that the ones that Deanna laid out, they're all gonna remain the same. There were some things that you talked about in terms of information on specific requests. Are there any other protocols that anybody thinks that needs to be discussed, that you have questions about, or that is not being handled now correctly, or is confusing? No? I think we've dealt with that, okay. So... Now the question is, how do you wanna record your city council governance guidelines? Of course, this is all gonna get written up, so that's, that's a no-brainer. But do you want to put these in some sort of, once they're refined, you wanna put them, like the principles, for instance, in some sort of a resolution? Or, you know, some, some permanent form that everybody can look at?
I think that we should maintain some, this record because this is the first time that we've had this session. And it, I think it will be helpful for years to come for people to see what our intentions were and when we were forming this level of governance for the future council members, especially and, and future staff. And it gives us also something to talk about in six months. Did we, you know, were we living up to these, our principles of governance?
Okay, so basically, so maintain a record. As a staff...
I agree with that only because we, we had an issue and Councilmember O'Neill became our governance person. And we had, we had, there were so many documents, or if you asked the question, you would get all different answers. So if we don't start putting all this stuff together and streamlining and making sure, that's where the chaos came. And so now that we're doing that, and we can go back to it, change it, as so long as it's a living document, we're okay. But there's a lot of things that need to be put and condensed, and this would be great. And I like revisiting every six months because something might change. And we never know when it's going to change. But it also keeps us all on the same page between, you know, us making policy, going to the city manager, and her implementing to staff. If we're all working together, we're gonna coexist a lot more peacefully than before. So, and I have to applaud Councilmember O'Neill for bringing that governance thing to us because there was just too much. There's just way too much.
Okay, so, Deanna, did you have any thoughts about how this could be memorialized other than, of course, putting a report together?
I like the idea of, of the report that you'll issue and just noting and filing it at a formal council meeting so that it's properly recorded. I do think that the six-month is very timely because what's going to happen is at the priority setting session, we will bring back the advisory vote and start to talk about the work plan implementation for that, which will have implications for the work that we're doing. Six months from there, we'll have an opportunity to check in and understand where we're at from the advisory vote perspective, as well as the CVRA lawsuit. And so those will begin to inform yours, every six-month sessions. On top of that, next year happens to be our Census 2020 effort where we're getting ready. Census, the 2020 count will obviously have, the outcome of the 2020 count will obviously have implications for district boundaries. So this is a business that we are going to be in for quite a number of years ahead of us. And will, the six-month check-ins will be very helpful.
A comment I'd like to make on that is that at this six months, I mean, we may see that we do need to memorialize a little bit of this. We do have a council policy book that we were working on updating, and it could be that we take some of this, and once again, I'm not talking about rewriting the California constitution. But to do some kind of, somewhat of, as I said, a memorializing in the form of council policy, not talking about the city code or a city manager directive, which, name of which is a little, or whatever, just something like that, but that may emerge.
Yeah, can live with it for a few months and just see how you're doing.
Yeah, I see this as a living, breathing document that we're gonna be using, and it helps us understand a little bit about how we're operating. But also in six months, we'll have some real-life situations and examples that we'll be able to bring back and then that we can deal with at the time and say, well, this happened, and I'm not, I wasn't sure how to handle, you know, this particular situation, because there's nothing better than real life and dealing with our constituents.
It's kinda theoretical right now.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Reality show.
Yeah, right. Well, hopefully the reality show will be a good one in six months, though. Okay, okay, so... Given that, and you'll be happy, we're doing great on time. We're almost done. So just wanted, we really are almost done. I always like to share this slide. I, I think this is what you're about. You really are creating your future. You're being very proactive today. This is a quote from a futurist that, that I really like. "The future is not some place we are going, but one we are creating. And the paths are not to be found but made. The activity of making them changes both the maker and the destination." And that's really what you're about. You're deciding how you want to govern. And then in January, you'll decide what your priorities are, our city councils. So, so that's, it takes both. It's, it's the how and it's the what. And that's, it's up to you to make that, to create that path. So as we wrap up here today, we'd like to invite everybody around the table, including the staff, to share one thing that was valuable to you for spending time today. It is a big time commitment, no doubt. So what was one thing that was useful to you? And I'm gonna actually write them up here. Ruth, I'm starting with you. I'm starting with you.
It's your district? Wait a minute.
Yeah, the R's first.
I found the exchange between the council members on, on the different issues to be very valuable. Very open and, and honest with one another. And it really helped us see, and at least from my perspective on the staff side, help us see where, where you're at and then how we might be able to best facilitate some of those areas where you're concerned about.
Good. Good. Manuel.
You know, I, I started my career in the city that had districts. So I would say just from a general perspective, it was very interesting to just look at it, starting from scratch, and seeing some of the, the key issues and items come up that I never really thought about, just jumping into an organization that already had, had that setup. I, I think what I'm gonna find most, most interesting is really that six-month check-in and just seeing how this living, breathing document is gonna change through those six months. Because, you know, whenever you start with something like this, you kinda put your best ideas forward, and real life gets in the way, and those, and those, and those best ideas change to even better ideas. So that's kinda what I'm looking forward to.
Good, good.
I really enjoyed the council's commitment to serve the entire city and looking beyond the districts. And just on a side, and I'm very happy we figured out the letterhead now, because it was the topic for me yesterday.
Good. Raj?
So I think as a new council member, I'd figured out, I have a lot to learn, first of all. And second thing is, although we got elected by district, but we have to govern with a very open mind overall for the city. That's a, with a flexibility and very open mind, keeping city benefits or city future in the mind.
I thank you, both of you, Jan and John, for, for your time and, and bringing, you know, your perspective from your experience. That was definitely very helpful, but, because I know you bring a lot to the table that's, you know, that you shared with us. But, but I think mostly what I'm taking from here is just, just seeing, I feel like we're on the right path. We're, we're on a path that we've, we were already on. But at the same time, even as a result of districts, it's not gonna take us too much off the path. But at the same time, I think it'll just enhance our, our city's, our city's ability to be its best because of, of the district policy.
Good.
I think that we were, I was elected by at large. So being elected as a district person will be new, I guess, from their perspective, understanding how, how this all came. But what I want to say is that, yeah, we're, we're on the right path. I think the biggest thing from here is how we're gonna govern and how we're gonna proceed. And going back into six months, I agree with Manuel, that in six months, things could change. And I, I'd just like to have it where we're gonna be able to be honest with each other and how this is gonna really fold out. And the communication, what's gonna happen with our constituents and how the residents has an impact, you know, how it's gonna come back to them also. So I'm interested in how this is all gonna fold out, but I, I'm ready for the journey. It's gonna be fun, so.
I think what was important for me to hear today is, I feel a little more comfortable going forward in terms of how we operate, and I feel like there's a better roadmap now. Although it's still, there's still things that are gonna hit us as we move along this real, in the real-life situations. But what I really liked was the intentions of the council members to still, we still have really good intentions to look at the city as a whole. And I hope that doesn't change. I'm sorry, I've seen so many other cities and how they operate, and I don't wanna be that. I know Santa Clara's a unique city. I want us to be different than some of these other cities that operate in a district system. But I loved hearing that our council members are still, we all care about the city. We're a special city. And, and that we wanna keep it that way, even though we're, you know, gonna be in this district system. So I think that gives me hope that, that this could, this could work out. And yes, staff, we heard you loud and clear for both sides here as to managing our expectations. So, thank you both for, for facilitating this today.
So it was good for me to just do, to actually hear each of the council members talk about how they view the, you know, what the meaning of district elections is to them. Because, you know, I, I wasn't sure of that before, what everybody thought about it. So I think that was, to me, very interesting. And also, I, I enjoyed John's allegory of the cups.
I learned to double-check my phone, not just once, that the, that the ringer's off. What I really appreciated was hearing, especially Deanna, go through all the list of different things that they're looking at and would, how they support us. And recognizing that it was, there were even more than what I had thought of. And being very mindful of staff. I'm appreciative.
For me, the most important thing was to see these six other perspectives from my fellow council...
For me, the most important thing was to see these six other perspectives from my fellow council members on this districting issue, and the issues that arise as a result of these now being elected by district. And I have to say, I was very pleasantly surprised and impressed that, frankly, in the words of Maya Angelou, we're more alike, my friends, than we are different, and there is a lot of consensus about the way we should move forward. Secondarily, I was very, what was important to me was to see the staff's viewpoint on these issues, especially the results of your executive team meetings and the management team meetings. Those slides were very helpful, and I'm going to keep those, because they had a lot of good things to keep in mind. And thirdly, this is our first meeting with our new city clerk, and although we know that Mr. Hoggag is not shy about expressing himself, in this context, I was so pleased that your comments are measured and objective, and you brought a lot to the conversation. The city clerk's role is a new one as well as we move forward, and I'm really glad to see that you'll be proactive in that role and have a lot to contribute, so I appreciate that, too.
I know how busy we all are, so I appreciate the time that was committed on this topic as we create it together. I also really appreciate the city council for being honest, and on the unknowns or the assumptions that council members come in with, the election realities, and be able to speak freely so that we better understand what's on your mind as we go through this together. And I always appreciate staff's ability to speak and just provide our perspective. It is, it is a very rare situation where we get to sit like this and talk in that manner. In the city of Santa Clara, it's not rare, for other city staff in other cities, it is rare. And so I really value that opportunity. It is unique, and it's because of the interest of this council to understand staff's perspective deeply.
You know, there are a lot of similarities between the concerns between the council, this council session and the staff sessions we had, and I like that you reacted to staff's input, so thank you.
I have a couple of observations. The first one was, John, when you were first introducing yourself and saying that you're from some, you know, small university town in Kansas, and the first thought that came to my mind was, you know, from the Wizard of Oz, it's like, John, you're not in Kansas anymore. But the more you talked about your experience, the more, it was clear, you had a university in your city, right? You had a downtown situation, which is, we had a much more unfortunate situation, but still some of the challenges are similar. You're talking about the aquatic center, right? So I was like, you know, so the more you talked about, I was like, wait, you've been living here in Santa Clara this whole time?
That's great.
So it's really, I think it was very insightful to see that while Santa Clara is an extremely unique city, we can learn from some of the experiences from others around us. That was my first observation. And the second one was, you know, we've never really had town halls, at least in an official capacity, because I've done some as just a resident. Of course, there have been the State of the Union tour that, you know, was done, and, but we got a whole sheet full of, you know, comments or ideas about how to make town halls better, which was one of the things that I've been pushing for, and hopefully, I'm really excited to see that everybody else is excited about doing town halls, and that, you know, we're going to get, obviously, the supportive staff to make it happen, so that's really exciting for me.
Good. Good, okay, why don't you wrap up?
Yeah, I'll say something then.
Yeah.
So I want to thank you all for your, for your time, and also for the interaction. It seemed very, it was very genuine, and obviously, you were talking about things that were important to you, and I think that's the most important thing of these, of these sessions. Your six-month revisit is going to, obviously, going to be important. I would, I have one piece of advice there, which is, don't spend, don't spend all your time talking about what didn't go right. Spend time talking about what went right, okay? So try to reinforce the positive, don't dismiss the negative, but really focus on, okay, what did we do well? What are we doing well? How are we, how are we living up to these things well, so that you can continue, you know what you need to continue, continue on, okay?
And I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here with you today. It's very exciting that you're taking this time to be intentional and to try to do things right, knowing that you're going to learn from experience, so I just wish you well, and it's exciting to see Santa Clara moving forward in the way that you are, so thank you for the opportunity.
I just, I want to close with acknowledging that you are trendsetters. A lot of the surrounding cities who are going through redistricting have not had the opportunity to have a session focused on governance. So I am certain as cities right now, our city managers are sharing information related to council districting, will share this information, so they know the work that you've completed and how it could be useful. I want to thank John and Jan for the session.
Yes, thank you.
But I also want to thank Nadine Nader and Kendra Davis for putting the session there. They're the brains behind this. And I want to invite the council, as things come up, thoughts come up over the next six months, to send the information to Kendra and Nadine. They will copy me or share with me, and we'll assemble this for our six-month session. So just remember, Nadine Nader and Kendra Davis, they'll log it and collect it and present it back to you.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, and thank you, city manager, for facilitating all this as well for us. We appreciate it, and you gave us a lot to think about, and I look forward to six months from now, and we have a lot more things to ask you.
Okay, here's your final from my same colleague, George Pritchard. Go for it boldly with caution.
We got half that right. Thank you.